The Lewisburg Area School District, if everyone will please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. I have just a few announcements. We met in executive session for 30 minutes prior to the board meeting to discuss four personnel-related matters. And we have Dr. Untagr Fisero with us via Zoom and Mr. Fetzer and Mr. Heath are both excused from tonight's meeting. And with that, we come to one of our favorite things to do, which is to recognize our student athletes for their participation in state-level competitions.
Okay. Thank you for everybody who's come out this evening. You will be receiving certificates. I just don't have them with me right now, but you'll have them delivered to your homies tomorrow. So first want to recognize our swim team. They had five swimmers compete in the PIAAA Swim Championships at Bucknell University. Gold medal district boys for 200 meter relay team of Miles Fisero, Mitchell Malias, Braden Davis, and Mason Ordonas were the competitors. I understand some of our swimmers are not able to be with us tonight as they had other commitments. So we want to re-recognize our swimmers at our next school board meeting as well. So I don't think any of these folks are here with us tonight. Mason also was the district for gold medalist for the 200 meter free and 500 meter free and a silver medalist in the 200 meter free relay districts. He placed 19th at the PIAAA State Meet in the 500 meter free. So congratulations to our swim team. Kimberly Shannon, district for gold medalist in the 500 meter free and 200 meter IM, won the gold medal for the second time at the PIAAA State Meet and in the 500 meter free and a silver medal in the 200 meter IM this year. She's not with us, right? She's currently celebrating. Yes.
Well, she will be celebrating. Our swimmers also are swimming on a club team. So they have YMC Nationals coming up. So several of them will be swimming this Sunday in a national competition. But in an hour, she will be cruising down Market Street in fire trucks.
So congratulations to Kim, our head coach Derek Uftagraff, and assistant coach Hillary Cray. Wrestling, two wrestlers competing in the PIAAA double A state championships. Jayce Gessner, 11th grade against the Southern Sectional Champion, district three, third, I'm sorry, district third place and Northeast Regional Fourth Place and PIAAA a state qualifier at 106 pounds. And Kaden Wagner, 12th grade, Southern Sectional Champion, district second place, Northeast Regional Second Place and the PIAAA State Third Place at 145 pounds. Stay with us tonight. Okay, our head coach Justin Michaels and our assistant coaches Tom Michaels and Mason Wagner. Congratulations. Congratulations. Boys basketball, I think they're all here almost. Okay, Coach Bajai is able to attend. He initially wasn't going to, but there he is in the flesh. And he coached, he's coaching our boys lacrosse team, but was able to be here tonight with us. Season highlights, the boys basketball team finished the season with an overall record of 23-6. They were 12-4 in the P-HAC Division One. The team finished as co-champs in the P-HAC Division One and defeated Athens to claim the PIAAA District Four Quad Championship. The team then defeated Littlestown 56-54 in an exciting first-round state game that was played at Lewisburg Area High School. In the state Sweet 16, the team lost 49-29 to Bethelman Catholic. Some P-HAC player recognition, Jay Hernandez, Division One Player of the Year Cam Michaels and Joey Martin, First Team All-Stars Forrest Elkowsky, honorable mention. And Joey Martin was also voted to the All-Defensive Team. Coach, if you want to come up and help me recognize your players. Also want to give some credit to Kendron Sosa and Dakota Keister as our videographer and scorekeeper Gavin Schwartz. So congratulations. Yep, you want to call, call your guys up? Okay, absolutely.
Also, before we start, there's four other people I'd like to recognize. Our manager, you guys know him, Kenny Wagner, fourth grader comes up. He comes to practices and helps us out. So I want to recognize Kenny. Assistant coach is Dad Ken Wagner. Our other assistant coach Dirk Remensneider, and then we had a volunteer coach come help us, Adam Cole. So that was all exciting. And now we'll call the players who are here tonight. We'll come on up, we'll go front row, we'll go to the back row. We got some couple of guys at a baseball scrimmage and things like that going on. So we appreciate everybody being able to be here. We got junior Henry Harrison. Sophomore Noah Paul. Sophomore Charlie Landis. Senior Jay Hernandez. Sophomore Angel Ortiz. Senior Deshaun Akins.
Congratulations.
Junior Sam Barrett. Sophomore Will Barrett. Junior Dylan Dershow. Senior Joey Martin. Senior Will Run. Athletes, junior Cam Michaels. And just real quick, I just say, let's talk about these guys as a group real quick. We started practice November 19th, finished our season, it was like March 11th or something like that. Between practices and games, we spent over a semester together. I think we had 60-some practices and 29 games we played, but I cannot ask for a better group of young men to be able to coach. They were a joy to be around, but they knew we could come to practice, we could have fun. But when it was time to get between the lines and get focused, they got focused and got the job done. And as exciting as winning the district title was up at Athens, I think my best moment of the year was the state game Littlestown because we played it here at our own, in our gym. It was probably sold out. It probably had about 750, 800 people in the gym. And it was a nip and tuck game back and forth. And Henry hit a big three to put us up by one. And then we got, we go up by two with about 23 seconds to go. And as a coach, and I'm sure, I don't even know if the players recognize this, realize this, but we came out of a timeout. There was 23 seconds left. Littlestown had the ball. And just as I turned around, they're getting ready to put the ball, but everybody in the gym stood up in unison and was just cheering like crazy for 23 seconds. And these guys prevented Littlestown from even getting a shot off. They didn't get a shot off and didn't even have an opportunity. So, I mean, yeah. The win in the district title was probably the highlight of the, but that state game was pretty special. Being able to do it in front of our own student body and our own fans here and stuff like that. So congratulations, fellas. You guys deserved all the accolades you guys got. And underclassmen, let's see if we can do it again next year. All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
Again, we'd like to just thank you all for coming to be here. It's really one of our greatest pleasures to congratulate our very successful students. So thank you for being here. You are more than welcome to stay. Our next agenda item, citizens' comments to the board on agenda items.
All right, take a look here. Right, wait for the internet to catch up. Nope, no comments online.
That brings us to board representatives' comments. And then the spirit of athletics, I'll start with you, Mrs.
Okay, so we have started the spring season and I am now an expert on weather and mud and grass and turf and everything that could go wrong in a day. So I learned how to squeegee off a tennis court today so that we could play. So it's never a dull moment in athletics and we're hoping spring is a short season. So I think we have something scheduled every single night. So if you have an opportunity to come out and watch a sport, whether it be junior high, we have girls soccer, boy soccer, field hockey, softball, baseball, and our lacrosse is up here on the turf. Please, you know, have the opportunity to come out and play. Oh, track and field. Yes, I cannot forget about track and field. They have their first meet coming up on April 5th, and that will be down at the Pauling Track. So yes, thank you for that, my mind. It's been a busy day out on the fields. For special ed and just kind of working through our extended, our ESY, looking at rooms, making sure that we have space available, working with the high school since we will have construction going on throughout the summer with our air conditioning and our HVS AC. So making sure that we have space available, getting letters out to families and working on the logistics of all of that has been kind of a priority this week and everything. So.
All righty. We had 48 students last night, no, not last night, night before, inducted into the National Honor Society, which is always, you know, a great event to watch and to see our students get that academic recognition and to be able to have that ceremony again. And also the reception afterwards was just such a nice time for parents and families and, you know, students to be able to interact with staff. It is the 100th year of National Honor Society. Also, Mrs. Fennell realized it was 50 years ago that night that she had been inducted into the National Honor Society. So little fun fact there, but it was just a great event for that. We also had students who participated in a field trip to Susquehanna this week with Mrs. Osborne and Mr. Krieger, where they had the opportunity to show off their selling skills. They basically presented, they were given different scenarios and presented to a group of business professionals, including the Wilkes-Barre Scranton Penguins. So for them, it was to design or pitch why they should hold an event at their venue. Our students did incredibly well. They, we had several students come back as prize winners, including Vivian Vance, who won a $600 prize, which isn't bad, just for heading out for a field trip in the morning. They were, they were pretty excited. And it was just a great opportunity. They also got a chance to attend workshops and to tour campus, the campus. So it was just, again, those great opportunities that we see that we haven't had the chance to do and just to see, you know, our seniors having the opportunity to experience those and our underclassmen, hopefully, you know, will be able to have those for years to come with that. Last night, Mrs. Fennell, Dr. Zach, and Mrs. O'Connor presented our annual senior options meeting to the upcoming juniors, seniors rather. And that was very well attended. I would say we had over 50 people that came and participated in it. They gave an overview of the ACE program. We had Grace Hilker, who is a current ACE student, come and talk about her own experiences, her own schedule. You know, just sharing some tips about what would be helpful if you are an ACE student, some things that are, you know, things to keep in mind as well as, you know, things not to worry about. A lot of times kids worry, even though we say, you know, yes, you are still able to do extracurriculars. Here's a student that actually did still do extracurriculars and was able to balance. And also we went over things like the state graduation pathways and the five different options for graduation. We went over the newly revised graduation project. Talked a little bit about SUN Tech, but we've already done presentations with the students and the applications already were needed to be due for that, which is overall just a really good turnout. And again, you know, I just want to thank the counselors for putting in that extra time as well as then afterwards, you know, however long your program goes. Then you also have the, you know, those questions, follow-up questions afterwards. So after a long day, you know, being able to put that time in, we appreciate very much. Mr. Popwitz.
Good evening, everybody. Want to touch about Capitol Day, which was Monday. Our ninth-grade students were able to go to Harrisburg to visit the state capitol. On the tour, they were able to meet some representatives and they were pretty fortunate because the house ended up not being in session. So they were able to actually go onto the house floor and be able to experience that. I want to thank Cody Botts, one of our social studies teachers, for organizing that trip and then also the chaperones that went on that. I think it was a good trip because it's an opportunity in which, you know, students are able to see the state history and then they're able to see, you know, maybe a career interest that they might have for something they would want to do in the future. The other thing I want to talk about is tonight's volleyball. So the ninth graders have a fundraiser for their class. And towards the end, they may have shown up already, but Bucknell Girls Club Volleyball Team will be here. So they'll compete against the winner and maybe even teacher team as well. So if you're looking for some excitement after the board meeting as well, you can head over there for some snacks and some entertainment.
George, did you bring a change of clothes?
Actually Eric did though because.
So it was great to see the basketball guys here. I saw them play probably 10 or 12 times this season. An outstanding group of guys and really achieved really well, much higher than I think anyone anticipated at the beginning of the year. I'm the middle school principal, want to brag about my middle school kids. Our math counts team went to states this past week. Saturday was such a beautiful day. And they were at Hershey thrilled to be indoors answering math questions. And none of them are advancing to the Nationals. They took only four from the entire state. But they were thrilled for the experience, two eighth graders and a seventh grader. We still have, and I'll introduce them to you at a future board meeting if it's okay. But we have our TSA kids are heading on to the state competition that's later in April. And our Odyssey of the Mind kids are going to states that's early in April, but that's still in the future. So I wanted to have some of those kids be able to share their experiences before introducing them to the board. Today, we sent two teams to Bloomsburg for the Husky Dog Pound Entrepreneur Challenge. And our teams did exceptionally well. There were 120 teams, 112 of which were high school teams. Many of the high school teams have courses dedicated to this outlet, to the entrepreneur challenge, this type of program. A lot of the schools had charter or STEM or magnet attached to their name. And we sent two groups of sixth graders from the public sixth grade. One of our teams finished in the top 30, which is absolutely amazing. Both of the teams did exceptionally well and pitched really unique products. One was a solar-powered cooler, so you wouldn't have to add ice with Bluetooth port for your outdoor speaker and it was rechargeable, had battery backup, all that kind of stuff. The other one that did really well was the weighted blanket that was rechargeable. Worked with a remote control, but it would adjust temperature for you to make it cooler, make it warmer, depending on how you were feeling. And that was the one that finished in the top 30. Very proud of those kids. Tomorrow is the final day of our three-week-long kindness campaign at the, at the middle school. That's headed up by Mrs. Ulrich. So tomorrow, your kids should be wearing something that says Kind Kindness, a sticker or something that says kind or a positive message. And we really appreciate Mr. Maurian, but especially Mrs. Ulrich for spearheading that. And on the 11th, which is a week, two weeks from Monday, we'll have our honors reception here at the high school and we'll recognize our students for their academic achievement. The kids that are recognized in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade have achieved honor roll status for the first three marking periods of the school year. So we're excited for that program on the 11th. Mr. Wetzel.
Thank you. Good evening. First thing I wanted to share, just had an awesome observation this week in one of the classrooms in Lindtown of a math lesson and to see just an entire lesson of this new math series that's been a big focus, K-5 this year. And hearing the language, vocabulary, the kids are using, the concepts, just everything they're doing and the positive feedback from teachers, it was such a great thing to experience. And just breaking down concepts in multiple ways and letting students know there are multiple ways to find answers. And it teaches them those tools and then they can kind of use the tools that they feel most comfortable with. But it's really developing a deeper understanding and developing that mathematical reasoning. So it's just great to see, great to hear all the kids involved, helping one another and really using that math vocabulary as they did it. I know it can be more stressful on parents because it's definitely not how they learned their math. But it's just awesome to see, almost done with year one here, the positive impact that it's had and the positive feedback from students and from the staff. So just wanted to touch upon that. Another thing that I feel like the last few weeks, there's been a lot of collaboration amongst buildings just in planning. There are a lot of different things that we're planning out. And I know with mainly it's been, I feel like with Kelly and Lindtown, with some of our transition services and preparing. But we're using the expertise of the people that we have in district and their experiences. And everyone's been so willing to accommodate time schedules because we are on different schedules. Coming over to buildings and tomorrow, we have some of us are going over to Kelly Elementary. But everybody's been so willing and so helpful and offering to help as much as needed. And there's been a lot of effort in many ways, but just the collaboration's been, been great. And one of the things we have collaborated on, we do have full grade level chorus again at Lindtown, which hasn't happened with COVID, so we're planning out just the concert and how we want that to be because it will be a little different than traditional concerts, just in length with the amount of pieces they're able to get through. But it's exciting to have that back. And I know our music staff are really, really excited for that. And along those lines, shout out to Mr. Rule and his staff. It was a second grade music curriculum night. Was awesome. And I think the energy in the building on that night and just, that's, that's the big deal for those kids. And I know my daughter, she was so pumped and excited for that. But that was such a big deal and for just for them to be able to have that experience is pretty awesome to see. So we're excited as we plan out that concert. Then the last thing I wanted to touch on, we also brought back Girls on the Run program to Lindtown this year, which we've had such a positive outpouring from parents willing to help as coaches, assistant coaches for kids to participate. And I think that's such an important program that teaches so many skills. A lot of times you think, oh, well, they just run. But they also teach them so many life lessons and life skills. And we're excited. That just started up this week. It's on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we're very excited to have that opportunity for our students.
That'll pass on to Mr. Rule. Thank you, Mr. Wetzel. Yeah, it was just amazing, the two music concerts that we had for first grade and then for second grade earlier this week. The energy in the rooms, the notes and emails that I got from parents, just being so thankful for that opportunity. But it was all about the kids and the looks on their faces before the concerts and the excitement that they had and the pride that they had when they were done. And what's really important, like our second graders, they didn't, they've never been in a concert. So their kindergarten year, the pandemic hit and they didn't get the chance to do the small concert that we do during the school day. And they didn't have the chance to do that last year. So again, they got all dressed up, their faces were ear-to-ear smiles and just had a great, great time. And they loved, they were talking about it days after. So really enjoying it. So thank you to our music teachers for making that happen and to our kids for putting on such great performances. This week, we have been hosting folks from Transitions here in Lewisburg. Prior to the pandemic, we used to bring them in as well and do different kinds of presentations at a developmentally appropriate level. So K-1 is really a focus on acquaintance awareness, trying to help our youngest children understand basic safety kinds of things with strangers and people that, you know, may be around them in their neighborhoods. And two, grades two through three, kind of focusing on the idea of, you know, when certain kinds of secrets like you might keep with your best friend are different than other kinds of secrets that might be dangerous or hurtful. And trying to talk to the children about what those are like, providing information to parents so they can also talk to their children. The programs from Transitions over the years have evolved. The ones that we're seeing this week have been outstanding. We've got many positive responses from parents and from families just thanking Mrs. Malino for organizing this. Every single class gets their own separate presentation and the chance to sort of talk and share. And I think it's been, been just wonderful to have them come in. On April 1st, Reptile Land is going to come in. They're going to do a kindergarten, first and second grade assembly in the gym. That's going to be a lot of fun. Our third graders have a field trip in May that they'll be taking to actual Reptile Land. So this will be fun. And on April 7th and 8th, PBS will be coming in, their kids in the classroom program. So we have several kindergarten and some first grade and even a couple of second grade classes that are going to be participating in that. So that'll be a lot of fun. And just the final thing I want to comment on, I've made reference before about the Big Buddy Program and how thankful I am to have this building so close and have high schoolers there. But today was one of those things that just, you know, kind of, kind of reminds you. So I'm walking up the hallway, it's towards the end of the day. And one of the students that I was talking with and walking him back to class, he says, that's so-and-so's big buddy. And he tears off down the hallway because he wants to tell his friend in class that his buddy's coming. And so we're walking up the hallway and the big buddy, who I didn't really recognize, said, you were my principal in third grade. And he shook my hand and I said, well, thank you very much for coming and being a big buddy. And he said, well, I loved it here at Kelly and I'm just really glad to be able to help and work with the kids. But then his little buddy in the classroom pokes his head out, starts doing an incredible dance. And when this big buddy walks in the classroom, all the other kids start clapping too. So the connections that they're making and the eagerness that they, that they have. And in some cases, some of the things that they're doing, like some of our big buddies are working with kids on academic skills that they need to develop, maybe on friendship and social skills that they're developing. But because they have these great relationships with their little buddies and because they're a little bit older, the little buddies are willing to listen to them, maybe differently than they might someone else. So again, thank you to Paula and to Josh and to all the people that make the Big Buddy Program work. Let's keep doing that for years and years and years.
Billy O'Connor is one of the, here at the high school that helps coordinate that. And so our kids are very grateful to have that experience back as well.
Thank you all very much. It's always great to hear all the wonderful things that are happening in the buildings. And we'll hear now from Thea Promis and McKenna Maury who are here to represent student council.
That's a really cool story about big buddies. I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, like, I have so many friends that do that and they love doing it. So it was really cool to get to hear a little bit about it because I'm not a big buddy, but yeah. So my name is McKenna Maury. I'm the president of student council here at the high school. And me and Thea are here just to tell you a little bit about what's going on at the high school and sort of the student body. So last Saturday, right?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't want to, didn't want to say. Minithon here at the high school hosted a successful volleyball tournament to raise money for Minithon by childhood cancer. And then on April ninth at the high school, student council is putting on a spring carnival that is open. To all of the students in the Lewisburg area school district. So that's super exciting to be able to do that and have that back and have something to bring. You know, students from Lindtown and Kelly and even the middle school together again to get to do something fun. And then I'm passed off to.
Yeah, so I'm Thea Promis, I'm the treasurer of student council and. Today and tomorrow, we have twelve students at region choir, the region choir festival, which is really exciting and a really incredibly high number. And the concerts tomorrow night, it's two hours away. So whatever. And then we also prom is coming up in about a month on April thirtieth. So. The junior class has been selling tickets and planning, so that is well underway.
Thank you guys so much.
See you at the next year.
Yeah.
Alrighty, that's the end of the. That round of presentations, I've lost my electronic agenda, so I'm on paper, but. Dr. Ba, the data report.
John, if you could just pull it from Word docs again, I mean, adjustment. Yeah, just reopen it if you could please. Thank you. So assessment presentation, there are thirty five slides. Breeze through some of them because the the information's there. Really what we're trying to do is just look for some patterns. I want to begin with. First, our two thousand twenty one PSSA and Keystone results. And a word of caution directly from the Department of Education across the state, about twenty five percent less students participated in this. We were able to, for the reasons of the pandemic, if parents were e schooling or they were not comfortable with their children coming in to take the test, they were able to. Sign them out of it, which is different than any other pasture where the parent has to come in and view it and have. An a religious exception. For their child to take the assessment. The window was also extended, so. We had PSSAs in the spring, but we could also take them all the way through September, which would be a significant amount of time from the time the court kids were in the courses. And instructional models varied throughout the state. From completely remote to hybrid to some combination to some in person, that certainly would have had an impact on the results. How kids were participating in in instruction, we certainly saw this with students in quarantine or students who were out. Because of COVID related reasons. So PDE is really cautioning. Not just school districts, but also lawmakers not to draw comparisons between this year's data and prior year's data. Especially not to make comparisons across school districts because everything isn't going to be exactly the same. They're in the process of preparing a webinar to help. School district leaders understand the scores better as well as how this will factor into future ready and all the other metrics that they have that are required by. Federal law and reporting. So with that in mind. I did do a little bit of a comparison just for us to have a sense of what was happening for us and see really how off were we. And I don't think it's too unfair because vast majority of our students were in person. For the school year, our many of our e school students did also participate in the PSSAs, some did not. But going across, we can see in ELA. The darker green is two thousand one. We see that there is a drop across. From the two thousand nineteen scores. If we go to math, we see that there really wasn't too much of a difference and oddly in some areas, almost a little bit better. So kudos to our third grade. As students performed a little stronger than they had the year before. In science, we can see that there was a drop. In which is pretty similar to what we've seen in patterns before. From fourth grade to eighth grade, but certainly from our two thousand nineteen scores. So in summary. Hundred and eighteen of the students didn't take the PSSA, all are in part, some came in for some part of the test. Some just did not come in for any of it as a result of the COVID. You you had the usual exceptions as well as the e school opt out that was a factor in there. We did have declines in math, science and. ELA. And that's something that teachers are anticipating and they were working through this year. Keeping in mind that when school ended March thirteenth, twenty twenty, kids missed. Two to three months of instruction. So where you picked up. In the fall of twenty twenty was also different. We couldn't, especially in courses like math where the instruction builds upon. Itself, that was a challenge for our teachers still be working through, but we did have some some happy surprises as well. Our younger students did did more consistently or perform more consistently than our older students and and that can. You know, be attributed to a number of factors. So there isn't really much we can take away from that with PSSAs. Algebra and keystones are just really interesting anyway, because algebra. Is given at different grade levels in the spring and in the winter. Our middle school students that take the algebra keystone tend to perform very well. The high school students, they're the students that need a little bit more time. With the material to be ready for that algebra assessment. So we've broken that down by the high school. The winter wave as well as. The middle school winter wave and the spring. So it's very difficult to compare how kids are doing unless. You really have a sense of which preparation course that they're in. High school always look a little bit lower, but that's because a vast majority of our students would have taken it. Prior to that. And these are just our first time test takers here. Something that's a little bit more stable. To look at, which is always important for our teachers is how the kids did in the modules. I think this tells us. Where we need to emphasize more of our instruction curriculum alignment. We look for that kind of pattern of consistency over time to see, are we getting enough instruction on those topics? And you can see there that. As compared to our pass fail, we certainly have. Some work we need to take a look at with our operations and functions. And data organization. So some of this is is what we're looking at as we're looking at our math curriculum in the middle school and certainly that'll have. Some conversation with our math teachers at the high school. During our January articulation, there was really good conversation with the teachers about how we're lining up and how we can design courses for those kids that are just in the middle. They're not quite the algebra two student or the trig student and how how do we give them enough time with the content? Because for some of our kids, it's not as cut and dry with algebra to algebra to geometry. They need a little bit more. Of that in between time. So that that that's a good conversation to have and please the teachers are continuing down that path. In our biology Keystone, we could see that again, our performance, we're not comparing really to how we did in the past with that. It's really difficult to do that with any of your keystones as kids can take it multiple times. But our advanced proficient and proficient are pretty steady. Our students who are not, who are basic and below basic can have an opportunity to retake and we really do that on a case by case basis. As well as taking a look at what's going to be the best pathway for them for graduation.
Should these numbers sum up to the size of the class?
To, that's their percents.
Oh, on the previous one, they look like actual one, because otherwise if we're looking at. So if we go back to algebra one Keystone. Those can't be percents, right? For middle school. Oh, I see. We have to add across winter and no.
It's it's how many kids took that test at that time. They're they're.
Okay, so a lot, lot fewer took the algebra Keystone in middle school between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Is that what I should understand there?
The algebra Keystone in the winter or in the spring? Because they take it.
In the winter. I'm just comparing middle school.
Fewer kids take it in the winter.
Miss Moser, yeah, in the fewer in the winter.
It's the one class in the spring, two sections of it in the spring and then one section. Two in the winter. I'll turn myself around the house. Two kids take it in the winter, the intermediate algebra kids take it in the spring. It ends up being approximately one half of an eighth grade class.
So the numbers should add up to like this, these are not percents and those are numbers of children on the algebra one Keystone exams. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
It may be, yeah, yeah. No, you're right. There's the numbers.
Students also, there was a high opt out. Sure. And so it's not going to add up like, so there may have been students that. Because we still have to educate or administer the test to students. If they're in our cyber. So and plus people had the opportunity, like if they weren't comfortable, like here at the high school of opting out if they weren't comfortable coming into the building and things. So there was a huge discrepancy in terms of how many. And then also the scores are banked then. For their eleventh grade year. So like, for instance, at the high school, what you'll notice is, you know, we didn't have. Nearly the tenth grade participation that we would have. But then they'll test then this spring, they'll be a large number. That will, and that's where we're grateful for the different pathways. So for instance, here for for my junior class. You might have students that depending on the type of instruction they had, or even like when you have a lab class like a biology. And last year, if you think back to even in person, you know, we're keeping kids. Six feet, you know, apart, a lot of the lab opportunities and things like that. So one of the ways that you can make those pathways to proficiency is a composite. Score now that between you have to score proficient on at least one and no less than basic on your two other. Keystone exams. So as like with this junior class, we're really looking at, okay, like. You know, but we have to have students sit, but you know, the main thing we're looking for is do they have their pathway, not so much, you know. Or we don't want kids stressing about out like, oh, my God, I have to be. You know, proficient or advanced if I wasn't even here and now I'm taking it a year later and I haven't had that course. But you're definitely going to see some discrepancy with the numbers from, you know, previous years, just because. There was, I I don't know, Mrs. Martin, like how many, you know, chose to opt out altogether. But I know that the majority of. My my students that were doing e school chose not to come in.
Okay.
The other, the across the state, they're saying too, that literature took the biggest hit across because. That's typically taken in your tenth grade year with high scores. So. PD, once they have that webinar out to help us to understand what we have to do, our job is going to be to catch up to these kids and make sure that they're taking that assessment. And and keeping in mind that performance is going to be off if the kids are a year removed from the course. So it's one thing to take your bio Keystone after you've just finished the coursework. It's another thing to take it a whole year after. And using, and that'll be part of the next presentation, not tonight. But what those career pathways look like and some tools, because it gives us some ability to. Make sure the kids are able to graduate, but not put undue stress on them for. Achievement on a test that really has meaning some other way than just to the kids. I mean, of course, we want our scores to be good. But we also want to make sure kids have, the learning takes place for them and that's really an authentic experience. So it's it's really hard to look at the two thousand twenty one data and make any kind of sense out of it. And then, you know, I would say, and I have that in the final. PowerPoint slide for just looking at last year's scores with the keystones. It's really going to be taking a look at the pattern over time with how we've done in the modules. And and how that's going to inform our instruction going forward and catching up with kids. The the tools out there that have the individualized data on the students are just coming. Together and that's something that, you know, certainly our administrators and teachers will have to dive into. We can go on to biology. We can see that, you know, we consistently. Can. Look a little bit more at ourselves and cell processes and certainly continuity and unity of life. Our literature exam. We see, you know, again, we have a good number of kids that are proficient, many kids that were absent from the test. So that's something we have to take into consideration. And as I said, literature's. The one that is the biggest conundrum for PDE to try and work through its meaning there. We can see with fiction and nonfiction literature, kids are. You know, certainly still. They're doing well with both, but we always want to make sure we have a good balance there. One thing that's changed with the the keystones with this is there's such an emphasis on nonfiction reading, not that they don't do that in. As part of a literature class, but it's also more authentically happening in science, social studies and some of their other subjects. So trying to balance. The study of literature with developing those content area literacy skills is is always going to be a bit of a challenge and we've added. Titles over the past couple of years to help address that. With the students.
I think I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still confused because the numbers shouldn't the numbers either sum to be the same or add up to a hundred percent?
They're they're the number of kids.
Right, but one, so ninety five kids apparently took the nonfiction section and only, you know, ninety two kids. Took the fiction section.
No, they don't.
They may have had a student who for one reason or another may have only taken one module. So for instance, you know, a student gets sick, a student is away on an educational trip, like you have like a window.
They still let you hand in like just an incomplete test? And the person would make it up later or something?
Yeah, they they for with the keystones, you would like, you could just do like that, for instance. With algebra, because that was the one that we retested this year, like some of our algebra students, like they only had to sit and take one module.
I see.
So they only like if they did have to retest, if you were already proficient on a model. On a module, you wouldn't have to retest for both of them, only on the one that you. Were either not proficient on or had not taken. So that easily can explain why there is a discrepancy.
I think that's what was escaping me now. If now I understand better because the module thing is broken out for other things. Got you. That's better for the student. If you proficient, you don't have to do it again. That's nice.
Because what if you suddenly weren't the next time you did it unlike in PSSAs, it's just finishing up.
Yeah, and they actually take your test.
Yeah.
To try to improve your.
Yeah.
If you are, you are, and you don't take it.
Again. Yeah. So, you know, focusing. On the module data, looking back at that is is probably the best thing we're going to be able to glean. And again, the proximity of the course to the assessment. That's going to be a challenge looking back at those scores. They, from what. Sherry Smith, the deputy secretary of education shared with superintendents, they they really anticipate this ripple effect for at least three years with data. Particularly at the high school. So. We're going to have to look at other assessments or other ways to make some sense of that. Next, we have some historical PSSA and with weed of results. And a little bit on our demographics as we can take a look here, we've shifted a little bit. And this can change every year, it can change every month. It just depends on students moving in, students moving out. But overall, we can see that we have more. A little bit more diversity happening overall with all of us amongst our student body, but it's it's not. Radical changes. But the diversity is there. In special education, that's where we see a little bit more of an increase specifically. In some of the designations for which students are identified, we're seeing certainly more emotional support students. We're seeing. More students with our autism state about the same. Other health impairment can change, speech and language. Generally stays about the same. Intellectual multiple disabilities, this, we don't have a large number of those students, but those are our students that sometimes have the greatest need. But I think, you know, teachers can report that too, that emotional disturbance is is certainly something that we're seeing a little bit more. That can be anything from a student who. Has outbursts and is very angry to a student who's exhibiting anxiety. So that can really be arranged. So just those catchall terms don't necessarily paint the picture of the student because it can be. All over things. And this is their primary designations. Some students have more than one. Shifting demographics and English language learners. We do have more English language learners. Than we had back in two thousand sixteen seventeen. Again, this is a movable. Data set. It it depends who moves in. It depends where students are also in the process of learning. Language, we we sometimes get students from another school district, they're already English language learners, they're not, they're new to us, but they're in the process of. Developing that proficiency. Economically disadvantaged is a little bit of a challenge since. Um, economically disadvantaged is a little bit of a challenge since we have free and reduced lunch for everybody over the past two years. So um, we do pull data from state databases to um come up with those numbers. But I would suspect that if COVID didn't happen, we'd probably be somewhere there about the same. So about the data. Um, one of the things that I did to take a look historically and to break this out by race and ethnicity. And then also to take a look at the impact of economic disadvantage on students' scores. Is combine grades three, four, five and combine six, seven, eight. The reason is, we in some grade levels may have one or two. And good practice is to have at least a set of eleven before we're calling something a subgroup. That's how PDE does it. We wouldn't want to draw attention to that one student who either performed super well or isn't performing well. Not that the name is here, but it it's just safer to do that. Well, it's not maybe the most orthodox practice. Of reporting data, we're just trying to illustrate some patterns here. Um, so we take a look at our breakdown of our students in grades three and five over this four-year data set. We could see that there's some movement um with the groups, but um, you know, for the most part. We we do have diversity within those ranges, but um majority of our students would be white. Um, each line represents um a different race or an ethnicity. What you can see here is is that. All we're compared to all students, which is the black line, we tend to see that our students that are Asian and white perform. Um, above the average of where all of our students are, and this pattern repeats itself. Please keep in mind that there isn't a large number. In some cases, you might be talking about ten kids over three grade levels. And it's not really fair to compare that and put the weight of performance on just a few students. Um, so ELA and math is there. Another way to, another. Um, factor to take a look at is the impact of English language learners. We see they do not perform very well on our PSSAs. They are able to um sit out um the English test, receive a Spanish math. And science test, however, it doesn't necessarily mean they have literacy, depending on the student in that language as well. So there's always a challenge. Um, we're we're really focused on having the kids feel included. Um, starting to develop the proficiency in English, PSSA is important. But um, you know, that that's not what the preparation is for the students um in their program. We can see that economic disadvantage certainly falls under where our average students are and our students with IEPs. And again, for IEPs, it depends on what the students' needs are and what their actual learning levels are. If they're being given a test at a fifth grade level, but they're reading at a third grade level. Because that's where um they need to be instructed because of a specific disability, it's. Um, you know, it's hard to imagine that they're going, they're going to reach proficiency at that point in time. They may at some point, if they were taking that test, but maybe not at that point in time. So what's really interesting though, is if we take a look at the impact of. Um, I can't being economically disadvantaged across um the. The four racial groups that we have, um, the most number of students in. And again, this varies by grade level. Regardless, if you're, if you have, if you're experiencing economic disadvantage. Yours, your performance on these assessments will be. Um, less than for the students who don't have those challenges. Poverty cuts across. It's not something that affects any one group anymore than um the other. But that's something for us to to pay attention to and and know and to understand. The question then becomes, how do we instruct the students? What are the experiences we give them? Because there's so many factors. That go into that that have an effect on their lives. So regardless of um the race and ethnicity. We see the same thing happen um both in ELA and in math. Sixth through eighth grade, we're going to see that pattern repeat itself um almost to a T from our three to five data. So um. If we advance there, we see where our population is, we see the same pattern happening. Um, for the most part with our students. A little bit of some changes um with multiracial. Again, this is how students identify themselves on the assessments as well. Um, we see the same pattern happening with economic disadvantage, English language learners and students with IEPs. And we see exactly the same thing happen with the impact of economic disadvantage with student achievement. So it brings us to consider when we're focusing. Um, get to the about the data, there there are certainly things we want to pay attention to with our student groups. But the thing that's universal is is the economic disadvantage. And if we're to focus efforts in in one area, that would probably be the one that makes the most sense. Because it's going to have the most impact on students. The question is what to do about that. Um, in a way that um still have students feel comfortable and their families feel comfortable and included. And a little bit about Wida, moving on. Um, so the Wida assessment, just um an overview of what this is for people that may not be familiar with it. We have to administer um the Wida exam. Moving my slides around here, we administer it every between January and February, there's it um a pretty large window. In in many instances, it's one-on-one assessment with the EL teacher, it's very time consuming. Um, so that's the score that we get is where the student is only halfway through the year. So that's something that's important to keep in mind. Measures, reading, writing, listening, speaking, oral language, literacy and comprehension. There are domain scores for each of those components, as well as an overall score um ranked from one to six. When we get the data, we get data reports on each individual student. So it's really unique to that student. It's, there are no engines out there that do any kinds of comparisons with this. It's really um understanding what is expected and performance in each of those domains. And then how we would accommodate our teaching in order to meet the students' needs as they're developing their English proficiency. Um, it has to be administered to all students that are EL students. Exit criteria has loosened. Over the past couple of years to where instead of just getting a certain score on a Wida exam and then. Um, proficiency on PSSA keystones to exit, teachers can use a rubric and look at the student's actual performance in class. It's a benefit because some students unfortunately end up being lifers in EL. And it, while they still may need that instruction or support, they're losing other opportunities and options. In in their programming. Um, but we are testing students who may have opted out of EL instruction. So growth may not be um exactly what what want to see it to be.
It's administered in January or February.
Yes.
Super not helpful, right? I'm assuming. Um, when do you get?
May, June.
So in time for the next year, but they've learned more since then. Okay, just.
No fleet.
Understanding.
Nope. And this is a national assessment too. So um. I I think a lot of it, it's very labor intensive probably to score it, to tell you the truth, because they're listening to components. It's, I I can't even imagine how they begin to do it and watching, you know, people have experienced administering it. Um, but watching it administer, it's 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 very, very time consuming. But those teachers administering it really get, I, it seems like a good sense of where the students are. Um, because of of just how one-on-one and intense it is. Um, so we have to administer home language survey to every student enrolling. How we find out if kids qualifies, if they indicate that another language is spoken in the home, we assess them using a WAP. It's um leveled at K two, three, five and so on and so forth. Um, even if they're identified as a student that would be eligible. Parents can still opt their kids out of the instruction. That is new with the change in the exit criteria. While that's good, that it's loosened. It really can be challenging for us because we still need to provide the student with instruction, but we might not be doing it in a structured EL class. And um, or with any regular meeting with an English language um instructor. Um, typical student takes about five to seven years to develop proficiency in English. Um, and that's, it it can depend and vary on the student. It also depends on their literacy and their primary language. They develop the conversational language first, then the academic writing tends to be the last thing to really come on board. There can be a lot of challenges for our students who are older. Because they may have had interruptions in their instruction, the expectations for what school looks like across the world. Is different than the United States. They're also, let's say, in fifth grade, sitting there, listening to the math lesson. But they don't yet have the academic language. So you end up with these really strange skill gaps sometimes with students who are English language learners. So there's a lot of challenges. Um, it, students who start off in kindergarten, everybody's learning their ABCs and one, two, threes. That they move along much quickly, much more quickly than, let's say, a student that comes to us in middle and high school. So we do the best that we can, um, you know, to make sure that they are at least developing along that trajectory. So what the best thing that we can really show you here is how many students we have that are receiving. EL instruction or at least getting the test administered to them. So you can see that across the top from two thousand sixteen to twenty one. How many are scoring um in each year, either as a one, two, three, four, or five? And again, this is a student by student indicator. There's no way to really map out. Um, how students are performing, we expect them to at least jump um one score each year. But they may go up in, let's say, comprehension and come down in oral language. It it, it just really depends on on that student's development. And, you know, we can't say enough to our EL teachers who really know those students and their individual needs. And and differentiate instructional or to meet whatever those needs might be. And finally, our next presentation will be looking at the Keystone exams and as as Ms. Reber was. Um, indicating the pathways to graduation and the ways in which. Um, I know our high school staff is now starting to take a look at how, what's going to be the right combination for our kids so that they can be successful. Since there are a couple of options for them besides just being proficient on the keystones. And that's, that's a welcome change because more of our kids will have um that authentic opportunity. Without the stress of the high stakes state assessment really deciding their future. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much. I I guess I do have a question like. Economic disadvantage has the greatest impact of what, what can we do? Like, what are strategies other places are doing to try to address this? And after school programs, before school programs, except I know extended school year, I was definitely left, but extended school year is something we've done. Is there, like, what else is there? What other levers are there to pull?
And that's, that's something that as we're with this presentation, as we dive into this with the Equity and Inclusion Committee to really. There are some good models out there about how to plan and how we look at data. One of the things that we've seen. Um, with just our data subcommittee is getting access to some of this data in our, in our um student management system. Building the reports to be able to identify the kids who are at the utmost risk. Um, it can be things from, you know, simply making sure the kids have the tools that they need. And the supports that they need in school and how we think about scheduling them, think about some of the opportunities, some of the coaching and mentoring. That teachers can do. If we know that students have the potential, because certainly some do well, even when they are. Are they taking the most rigorous courses that they can? Those conversations might not be happening at home. But how are they going to be happening at school with counselors or with teachers? So um, those are some of the things we we're looking to do to see how we're currently doing that now, what we might want to do a little bit more of. But it's, it's a hard question to answer because um depend, even with economic disadvantage. It depends on the challenges the families are experiencing and some of the supports from home. I don't know if principals, if there's anything that you might add on that.
The individuality again is very much, I would say, and this, one of the things, I don't know, you had mentioned like after school opportunities. One of the areas that we've always struggled with, like it's like here at the high school, we have Dragon Lair on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But often the students that could benefit the most from being here are the students who don't have transportation.
We don't have a late bus. That's right. We've talked about.
Yeah, and and it's not anything on the transportation end of it. I mean, currently, right now, we don't, you know. We're, we're lucky, we're, we can even do our regular runs. And certainly, you know, there's been, you know, you know. Accommodating when we say, you know, like, you know, every now and then, like, hey, can somebody ride? But there, there's. The answer isn't just to put secondary kids on an elementary run. That's not necessarily good for either. Um, and it doesn't do anything to encourage, you know, secondary kids to want to stay if they're like riding the third grade, you know, bus home. Um, so that, but that's absolutely one of the challenges is that we have is, you know, is. The access um to be able to take advantage of some of those times, so.
The work we do with career pathways is really important too, because that may not be something that. For a host of reasons, isn't a dinnertime conversation, let's say, that that's happening in all families. So wherever we can give kids the exposure and we, you know, we certainly shared some different field trips and opportunities, the kids have had that. That's why that's so important and so enriching, so that their eyes can be open to possibilities. And then helping kids to understand, well, what do you need in order to do that kind of job? What kind of training do you need? What kind of certification? Um, not the colleges, the end-all, be-all, but having programs for parents who never went to college themselves. But how, how it is you can go about affording college, the the role the community colleges can really play. Um, because they're affordable to students, but getting them where where we can, where it's appropriate for them. We just don't want to push them into places where they're not going to be successful, but to take advantage of some of the dual enrollment. And other programs that we have here that can get them a leg up. Um, to get them some of the skills and training that they need to be successful. It's certainly about, you want to see good test scores, but all of that's only. As valuable as the kids being able to go into some sort of career or job pathway of some sort upon graduation.
Have we ever had a late bus in the district for athletics and all that stuff?
Not since I've been at least at Windtown, so not for at least seventeen years there.
A lot of schools do, like, a lot of places.
I only ever had it where I was the teacher and it existed and it became a budgetary.
Yeah.
I think they stopped in the eighties.
But it definitely caused, the one thing with the late bus though, is then it also became like people just hung out at school, like without any activities or anything like that. Like, I know that was like our high school experience was like you get a shower with your friends and then like take the late bus home.
One of our challenges with Kelly kickoff too, is we have two buses that run, but one goes to the north, one goes to the south. How long will a kid sit on a bus? You know, how, even though the program's at no cost to parents, still, you know, putting kids on a bus.
Where our district is only forty-four square miles, but it is still a very long run, especially. I mean, I mean, honestly, if we had a late bus, we would actually need four late buses to go, you know, northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest in the district. Otherwise, like Dr. Bowe said, you're going to have kids that are going to be on the bus for upwards of two hours as it snakes around.
We have kindergartners who flatters, don't even make it.
Yeah, they're asleep after a half hour. I mean, I can't imagine.
What are the options for students to get help during the school day at the high school?
Our teachers are great about that in the sense that, you know, first of all, they can use the our flex period to do that. Several our teachers, when they are having a study hall, when, you know, even like if a student needs to come up. If they have a free period and they're teaching, you know, whether it's trig at that time or another, you know, English. Like they can even come back and then they like, you know, some of our teachers are giving up their planning times to do it, which then that ripples and affects. Other things. So it's, it's certainly that the opportunities are there. But it just, it always comes at the expense of something. And I think, you know, this year, it's even. Everything is just exacerbated because of everything, you know, both in terms of the the students. everything is just exacerbated because of everything, you know, both in terms of the, the students needing support as well as, you know, teachers have given up planning time to cover classrooms. And, you know, we were, you know, kind of went from zero to one hundred with back to clubs and, and things like that. So that amount of time, you know, is difficult. There have been, you know, talk about starting with a peer tutoring question, but sometimes some of the kids that, that need assistance are reluctant to let their peers know that they're struggling in something. So I, I think the thing is, again, to have different avenues so that there is that, something that fits everyone, you know, which is certainly easier said than done.
And I would tag into that all the early research on how we're going to ever recover this learning loss from pandemic, let alone the ongoing struggles clearly shows, as far as research can at this point, that tutoring is the most effective. But making tutoring systemic becomes all the challenge that we've just referenced here in the last few minutes. The answer to tutoring is to the individual student need, but the provision of it becomes our challenge across the system. So whether it be transportation or availability of staff or willingness of the students to avail themselves of the opportunities, that is exactly what we're saying here is, is makes it our challenge. It's, it's here, it's in front of us and we see the need and, and boy, to really lay in purposeful, intentional and effective solution to that is, is our struggle.
So just, just as an example, I've been working with our MTS S team and looking at our data. And one of the things we wanted to do this summer is we're going to work with Mr. Long. We're going to get some about seventy-five iPads that are going to be image so they can go home with the students that are getting that intensive support so they can use the Lexia program that they've been using throughout the year. And they can do it individually on their own, it's self-paced, it, it changes the instruction based upon the student progress that they're making. Plus, we can go and log in and see who's utilizing it and how much growth they're making. So we can actually see those reports. And combining that with being very intentional about who we invite to our ESY program this year, or our Kelly kickoff program this year. So again, trying to target specific students that need more of that intervention and wanting to give real priority to students who haven't made as much progress this year, while also looking at the demographic data to make sure that we're reaching those kids who need the most help and sometimes get over identified for support later on.
I wonder if you might be able to think about utilizing some of the big buddies is one idea. And I know it's great to have a buddy, but maybe some of these buddies could also collaborate in focusing on kids who are struggling, groups of kids who are struggling with a specific homework assignment. This is a table where we're going to work through these algebra problems or the Bucknell buddies. You know, or student teachers could be.
We can't find those.
The number of teacher, people going into teacher certification, when you look at the statistics between two thousand and seven and now, especially in the last few years, and I can't remember what percentage.
They're reporting a sixty-six percent decline in the last decade of young people going into education certification programs.
And in some specialty areas, we're not even producing one per year, right? There have been recent years, if you think physics, tech ed, there's some other certifications where it's like one.
And we do have, Bucknell does have a build together program, like Chris and I met with Ellen Amarante, where they redesigned that. So they'll go out to some locations and I know that's a positive program. So that is a way, they do support them with homework. They'll also try to do some activities. And that's something they've restructured the last few years. And I feel like when we met with her, they have a really good plan. That one of the things they also talked about was even like an SEL approach with the zones of regulation and teaching kids that. So I think they're really trying to do a, a good thing there. So I know that's really well received. And so I think partnering and then doing things like that is the best way to also try to reach and try to combat some of the challenges we have as a district with busing and everything. So I don't know if we'll get like a report at the end of the year with like the number of students they were able to interact with or work with. But I'm excited to hear back from her just with how that's been going.
And it's important to say that by and large, our kids are proficient. We, we have good proficiency rates while seventy, eighty percent ELA math. It's what could we do for that percentage that aren't proficient and they have some of these other challenges? How do we take and direct resources? Most of our kids are going to be just fine, but we should be able to do more for those kids that, and their families that are struggling. And, you know, so we have some good programs that are happening and burgeoning and, you know, it's just looking at with that with more intention and bringing that to the spotlight. I don't know that we've invented anything totally different. Just let's think differently about how we're currently doing it.
Do we know if the free breakfast and lunch for everybody program, it will continue next year or not continue next year?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, right now, it looks like it is not going to continue because in the omnibus bill passed by Congress, Congress did not grant the authority to the US Department of Agriculture to grant the waivers that they have in previous years for the COVID. So right now, as of June thirtieth, those waivers will expire and starting in the new year, we'll be going back to full paid, reduced and free lunch in the traditional sense. Now, of course, something could change between now and the start of the school year, but as it looks now, there will not be universal free lunch next year.
Can we still do that thing where we get the data another way so we can help the folks who should be able to access the benefit?
Oh, absolutely. And I would say that approximately ninety to ninety-five percent of our free and reduced kids come through the state certification system.
That's right.
That's, yeah, that's the vast majority. So that, that has continued this year and that will continue in the future.
Thanks.
Yep.
Are there other questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you. Good conversation. And we'll move on to the policies for first reading.
Motion to approve.
For a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Discussion? I, I noted that the social media policy has your name after it, as if there's something to be said there.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I had, I'd share with the board, social media, actually, PSBA came up with a policy for this. And it's policy we should consider adopting because we do have social media and use social media. To, we have an option of having an open forum or a closed forum. The committee decided closed forum. Open forum is where anybody can comment and that would drive, I think, all of the principals mad in trying to marshal all the comments. And unfortunately with Facebook, even though it's supposed to flag bad language and it doesn't really work. So it's more, we would use social media, continue to use it as we're using it now as more of a way to put information out there, celebrate kids accomplishments, things of that nature, not create, you know, a parking lot for everybody's thought. It also has some language that will be important to share out to staff that they're posting on social media. Not that we would look for, but if there was something that was erroneous or inappropriate as representative of the district, that, you know, that would be a conversation with that individual. So if there was an incident that happened and they're disclosing the names of kids that were involved or something of that type, like, that's not something that they can do. Their, their speech is, is limited when it comes to district business.
What would be the status of like sports that have Facebook pages or?
They won't all fall under. Yeah. Even all of our athletic pages or sports pages are all, everybody, regardless of what they're involved in. If they use, if they're associated with the Lewisburg Area School District, then they fall under all of our policies.
Instagram pages.
So would it still be the case, I'm thinking of Hillary Crease's Instagram page? Would an individual teacher still be able to operate something like that as long as they were following the policies?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. 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 It's not to create a, a social media czar, but anybody who's operating a page for a club or a sport or an activity or school that, you know, they need to be aware of that. And if they have open forum, certainly to make that change, to close it.
With Instagram, like.
Yeah, it doesn't really work.
Yeah, but you can still like things, right? I mean, that's kind of the point of.
You can still share it to your own thing and comment on it if you want, but then it's under your thing, not a comment underneath like the official L A S D.
Yeah.
You know, post.
Any other questions or discussion of any of the other policies at this time? I never remember. We do a roll call vote on policies. Uh, Dr. Twalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unseco Fisera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you. Next is the health insurance renewal for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay. So on a positive note, we were able to get it down from the maximum of eight percent. We do have, in recent months, we've had a couple of high-flying cases. And as you know, out in the, the world, unfortunately, inflation appears to be taking its toll. So we were able to talk capital blue cross into only a three percent increase for this year. So I'm going to count that as a win. Next year, we still have our eight percent cap, so we'll drive off that bridge when we come to it. But for now, we have our three percent increase for this year. So I would ask that you approve this this evening so we can lock it in for our budget for next year.
So moved. For a second, moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Hanos. Any discussions?
Just out of curiosity, is the three percent what, I know when you do the budget, it's kind of like the guess of the two percent, what you guessed.
Well, I, I always put it in the maximum, which is eight percent.
Okay.
So now by bringing this in at three percent, this cuts our deficit by approximately two hundred thousand dollars. Yep, another.
Good news.
Notch. Yes.
Any other questions? Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unseco Fisera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you. Next up is the baseball field stormwater remediation project sigh change order.
Yes, it, it wouldn't be a Lewisburg project without a change order. This one unfortunately was out of our control. Mother Nature did not like our schedule for doing work in late February, early March. So after consultation with both ELA, the contractor and the athletic department, it's been decided that it would be better to do this work after the baseball season is over. And actually, truth be told, right now, the turf, the, the sod that was installed at the behest of the Green Dragon Foundation is actually helping a little bit in diverting the water. So we aren't seeing as much runoff going onto the field right now. So we believe we're able to hold until after the baseball season is over. So this change order just shifts everything to June and then the clock starts again. So the work will be done in the summertime, hopefully when it's drier and easier to work with the earth. So we would ask that, and no change to the cost at all, just a shift in the timeframe. So we'd ask that you approve this this evening.
So moved. One second.
Second.
By Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Kraus. Any discussion?
Is this why Cory isn't here tonight?
Because absence does have to do with baseball, but in a positive way. All right, a roll call vote please follow. Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unseco Fisera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you. Next is the board president's report. I'll just say briefly that I attended yesterday, I guess, the, the third in a four-part series on board leadership from PSBA, as that are all of their programs just really well done. And it's just, it's a nice chance to talk with board leaders of different types across the state. This, the focus of this session was on managing the team of ten, and I didn't get a whole lot out of it because we're already pretty well managed. So that was nice. I did learn and then the, I exported this to you all, and then, then the official email from PSBA came out today that the sectional meetings are coming up and the one next week on, I believe, Tuesday evening is on mental health. And since that's something we've been focusing on, I just call that to your attention. It's, it's obviously, it's a virtual online session. Those, those tend to be really useful. So encourage anyone who's available to take advantage of that. Kathy, Assistant Superintendent's report.
Okay, I think I'm following everyone else's lead tonight. Mine's a bit of an oral report, just a few more things that have been going on. March sixteen, we had our in-service program through the efforts of the University of Pennsylvania group that we've been working with this year. The social emotional learning was the topic and our faculty at all four building levels, as well as our paraprofessionals were able to sit together and participate in both the focused presentation from the UPenn group, but then discussion group and breakout opportunities to continue to talk about some good effective classroom strategies to address social emotional learning needs K to twelve. Our administrative team and custodians had an opportunity on Tuesday of this week to sit together and discuss the upcoming major project with McClure. It was a very positive meeting toward continuing the planning phase of where we're at. Good information shared, planned walkthroughs are going to take place with principals at each building level to really get at the level of detail that everyone needs to understand what it's going to look like and, and how the destruction phase has to happen before the construction phase. They intend to work in the least intrusive ways. They want to preserve all classroom windows possible. And I thought that was very good, you know, piece to hear. They're looking to preserve the greatest amount of classroom space. And many of the classrooms will actually gain shelf space. And I just can imagine the teachers being thrilled that they actually not only have the climate control, but even a bit more room in their rooms because that's always a, a high demand piece. But I thought Delbert's leadership was, was very positive in setting this up and the ongoing work that it takes to bring that whole project forward. So that was a very good session for us. It's the time of the year where we are in the midst of looking at resources, middle school math, middle school science, grade three to five grammar and spelling, new reading materials in an updated edition of our basal series K to two. So there's a lot of the effort to bring those things forward to you soon here at the board level. Our English Language Arts teachers will be looking at titles for possible adoption on our reading list. And all of that begins to come together here as March turns to April. And finally, one of my other opportunities this week was to meet with our IU consultant, Dr. Jennifer Gersky, with several other districts as we continue to talk about what e-school could look like and e-school post-pandemic and e-school K to twelve. Our numbers are much smaller this year and, and we envision bringing back our elementary teacher out of the e-school provision arrangement that we had and, and bringing that back into, bringing her back into our classrooms. So again, just continuing to develop what e-school will look like for the coming school year is something that's ongoing now. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. That brings us to board liaison and committee reports. Do any, does anybody have anything to share?
I even met, but I didn't get the report yet. So we'll save that till next time.
Okay.
The policy committee met, but Dr. Bowe's really kind of already addressed the new social media policy, which is what kind of stands out most to my mind. Kristen, if you had anything?
No, that's, I think, the big, the big one.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like held out and voted on separately?
Yes, forgive me if I don't get the language right, but I would prefer to recuse myself from making CSI U related since I'm employed. Can I, can we do it that way? Yes, well, I say yes on everything, but. can I, can we do it that way? Yes, well, I say yes on everything but day on that or.
You just.
You just.
Yourself on that.
Yeah.
Okay, so then do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Stanton, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Roll call vote please follow. Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unseker Fisera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Heinos?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thanks. Uh, and then that brings us to director's comments. Jamie, I'll start with you.
Um, I really don't have very much. It was great to have the basketball team here and to hear all the things going on. I'm pretty sure that my husband watched the wrestling because we've been very into that. But other than that, I really don't have very much to say.
Okay.
Was really excited to hear about all the middle school academic teams moving forward and the competitions that are happening at area universities. I think every time we can get kids to area colleges and universities, that's a great opportunity. And I love the entrepreneurship and venture plan and sales pitches and all that. That's a lot of fun for them. That's great to hear. And I would really want one of those solar power coolers. So if we could talk to someone about that, that would be great. Glad the girls on the run is back. That's exciting. Was really glad to hear from student council. I hope that becomes like a regular thing. I think it's really good to hear from them and have them have some buy-in to what we're doing here. And thank you to Green Dragon Foundation.
Um, I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm really excited for the basketball team. I'm also really excited for the swim team. And congrats to Kimmy Shannon for defending her title in the five hundred yet again. Also glad to hear about transitions being at Kelly. I've had some opportunity to volunteer with them in the past, and I know they have a presence or they have had a presence in schools in the past. And it sounds like this is a great way for them to appropriately, as you said, work with our elementary school kids. So, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, obviously, to all the sports teams and academic teams. I had the pleasure of chaperoning my first middle school dance on Friday night. And I was super impressed by Mr. Rosen and the teachers and staff that were there were interacting with children and facilitating activities for kids. There was really something for everyone to do. The I wasn't quite sure what to expect, but I, everyone had a great time. I think at one point, the teachers that were overseeing the dodgeball may have even been having more fun than the kids. So that is always fun to see them right in there with it.
And you're okay, Mrs. Kraus?
No, I'm I can.
You're all right now.
I got, I I behaved myself and I'm allowed to go back.
Well done.
It was like a provisional, like, okay, this time, but I can go back. So I'm looking forward to next year. Um, I also want to kind of acknowledge the teachers and staff at Kelly for working with our younger students in dealing with kind of the climate of a war. My student at Kelly and other parents that I've talked with have all had such positive comments about the language our students are using that is not coming from us as their parents. Just in terms of, you know, my guy saying, you know, we can dislike a country, but we can't dislike the people who live there. And being thoughtful of that, that is from the teachers. So I I thank them for that and I'm so impressed by that. And the last thing I want to say, and I wish I would have said it last week. So more people heard it. But I want to thank you, Doctors Zimmerman, for the discussions that happened last week happened because you asked for them. So I know all of us were probably told by people, thank you so much to the board for bringing mental health to the forefront and, you know, having the counselors come and talk about it. And when I kind of thought like, well, you're welcome, but I didn't really do anything except for listen and, you know, think about a ton of things. I realized that came from you. So thank you for asking for that.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Unseker Fisera?
I don't really have anything to add other than I get to come home finally. So hopefully this is my really long time. I will share one thing. I've met a lot of different families from all over the country, actually. Three of which are in the program with my daughter. And one of the great things that I can just say adamantly about our district is the last thing in the world my daughter had to worry about while she's doing this program is school because of phenomenal, you know, things in place that they know her education's important, but her health is more important. And so thank you, Mr. Wetzel, for making sure that, you know, there was no stress at all on that account because a lot of the parents are stressed with their children being in this program from New York and Alabama and Virginia. And it's just nice during the parent meetings that I have with these other families that I'm like, yeah, I don't know what you're going through. I'm sorry. I wish you had an awesome, you know, superintendent, counselors, teachers, principal, you know, sorry, you can move to our district if you'd like. But I do appreciate that and all the support that we've gotten. And I'm super excited. Miles was one of the state swimmers. He was really bummed he couldn't come to the meeting tonight, but he got to ride the fire truck and to see a fifteen-year-old boy revert back to his four-year-old self of like riding a paratone. It was awesome. So thank you for all you guys do for everything in the district, but especially my kids.
Thanks, Derek.
Yeah, I wanted to say particularly kudos to all the individuals doing all kinds of competitions across all the grades and all the performers. Did you say, did someone say forty-two National Honor Society inductees? Is that just? Oh, you said eight, okay.
Forty-eight.
Forty, oh, forty-eight. And in just one grade?
Five seniors and the rest were juniors.
Like, that's a significant fraction of the class. It's not even that big of a class. Like, that's.
And so, I mean.
Do we rank somewhere in like thirty percent?
Like, I mean, and the process they have to go through, I mean, first to even qualify to pick up an application. You know, you have to have a ninety-five percent or above, um, you know, GPA and ninety-five or above GPA. And then, you know, there's the essay and the questions that they have to fill out and listing, you know, service and volunteer and leadership and, you know, there and then, you know, there is a committee of teachers and Mrs. Fennel is the advisor for that. So they have to comb through all of those applications. Rating go, you know, goes out to all of the staff if there are any concerns, if there's anything about any of the students. All of that has to be compiled, you know, and certainly getting the letters and everything ready. So it it's really a testament you know, to our students. And again, that's just, you know, it's those little things that you don't recognize that, you know, when people are like, oh, the teachers have a planned time. Oh, they have this, they have that. But like, these are the types of things, you know, that that they're doing afterwards too. But yeah, it was a phenomenal amount. And yeah, I'm super proud of them.
Yeah, I think we should always pause and think about like that. If we had class years of five hundred students, you'd be like, well, that's nice. But we have class years of like a hundred thirty to a hundred fifty, right? That's remarkable. So that's from kindergarten all the way up. These are amazing kids. And I also want to say that the middle school fun nights are like was saying earlier, when my son gets together with his friends, when they're in their thirties, they will be reliving not some high school soccer game. They will be reliving a dodgeball tournament.
And the war paint on the face was my favorite.
That is the serious business over there.
All right. Anything to add? Thank you.
Um, I I won't repeat what people have said. I just, I just one thing occurred to me. I think, Chris, when you were talking about the the concert and having the concert back for the first time, and we've talked so much about how much work has gone into dealing with COVID and all of the restrictions and all the things that couldn't happen. And I honestly hadn't really thought very much about all the extra work that goes into bringing things back that haven't happened for a long time and people haven't used those muscles of putting together a concert or or doing the clubs, you know, being back at a hundred percent on all of that stuff. So just continued gratitude to all of the staff for everything they're doing to keep things normal as they get more and more stuff. No, okay, sorry, I thought I heard it. Citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items?
No online comments.
And in the room? And I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Sounds like there's a ton of fun.